The pledge of allegiance, we'll start with that. Okay, Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Hoag.
Here.
Mr. Merlington. Here. Ms. Naprowski.
Here.
Mr. Nixon. Does it appear to be here? And Mr. Conley is here. Have, uh, Mr. Andy Moore, our planning official here tonight, and of course, we have Mr. Womack and Ms. Johnson here as well. Um. Need to look at the minutes of our last regular meeting on January third and see if we can approve those. Motion to look at the minutes or to approve the minutes.
I make that motion.
Support.
Anything we need to change or address? Not hearing anything, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes from, uh, the regular meeting of January third, twenty twenty-three? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The motion, the motion, um, carries. Uh, tonight's agenda, of course, on page one of your packet. Make it a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
Anything that we need to address on that? Addition, subtractions, throw the whole thing out? Okay, not hearing anything. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify aye.
Aye.
Aye, and all opposed? The agenda is approved. And let the record state that Mr. Nixon is now here. Um, moving on to public comments. Those. Ms. Powell, do you have a public comment?
Yeah. Uh. Just a brief one, um, the, um, there's a snow, uh, snow fest at the library. I believe it's February eighteenth. All kinds of wonderful activities for the kids, grandkids, nieces and nephews. If you would care to bring them. There's also a, um, uh, scavenger hunt throughout the city. I don't know how those work, but I just wanted y'all to know that. And a chili crawl that will be at restaurants only. So there's gonna be more details, but I just thought I'd give you a heads up on that and, uh, check it out on the library website. And hopefully, it'll be a very successful fundraiser for Harvest of Hope. And, um, whoever else is gonna be enjoying some money-making activities that day. Thank you.
No snow. Might be sixty degrees.
Is, are there any persons online? They're not very popular tonight. I don't know how to think about that. So, moving on. Excuse me, item seven, topics of interest, ex parte communication. Uh, any of those need to be reported this evening? We don't have anyone in front of us tonight, so it's unlikely, but wanted to make sure. Um, scheduled public hearings, there are none. Site plan reviews, there are none.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And that takes us all the way to other business. It's always fun to start with other business. So, uh, the first thing on the agenda is item A, discussion on proposed solar energy systems regulations. And I didn't put a page number on that, but it's, I know it's not far down.
Seven.
Page seven.
So, I apologize, um, I was at a conference last week, uh, we were in a bit of a hurry. I was in a bit of a hurry to put this together. Um, I know that Mr. Moore put together the bulk of this, um, proposed ordinance. Uh, but my recollection at least is there was discussion about possibly allowing ground-based, uh, solar arrays. Uh, Mr. Hoag, I believe you indicated that you have a side yard that you might be interested in, uh, putting a system in. And of course, the city and businesses might want a pretty larger, uh, ground-based system in if, you know, they have the land to do so. Um, so what I did, um, it's not reflected in the draft ordinance itself, but in the notes. Put together a ser- a series of proposed, um, requirements that we could impose, um, to keep a ground-mounted solar array. Uh, I guess to the, the proper standard and size. So, I'll go through those. Just choose to discuss any or all of them and, and if I have agreement on some or all of them, I could work those into the ordinance for your next meeting. So, uh, I guess rule number one would be that ground-mounted solar arrays that are located in a residentially zoned district would only be permitted as an accessory use of a property, but not a primary use. Not, there's a lot of people who are gonna buy a residential lot and then just put a solar array with no house around it. Um, but I think it's an appropriate rule to have. Um, number two, a ground-mounted solar array located in commercial or industrial zone districts may be either a primary or accessory use of the property. Um, so, not super eager about commercial properties turning into a ground-based solar array. Um, I suspect commercial properties are probably a little too valuable for that, except in a situation where perhaps that property might be, what do you call it, landlocked, uh, no public road access, something to that. So, I'm not sure how you guys feel about, um, especially a commercial property being a primary, uh, use of a ground-mounted solar array. Uh, but industrial properties, it might be appropriate. So, I'll leave you to that to discuss. Uh, number three, a ground-mounted solar array, uh, would have to be special land use regardless whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial. Number four, no ground-mounted solar arrays are permitted in the front yard of any property. If the solar array is the primary use of the property, then it shall meet all setback requirements for a primary use in that zoning district. So, for instance, to build a house on a residential property, it has to be at least thirty-foot setback in front and rear. Um, and R1 has to be ten foot on the sides. Uh, if the ground-mounted solar array is an accessory use of the property, it shall be located no closer than the greater of either five feet from the property line, which is the, uh, shed or an accessory building would be, uh, or the height of the solar array off the ground. And I'm not sure if there's a more elegant way to state that, but we don't want a solar array that's mounted fifteen feet up in the air, but it's only five feet from the property line. Uh, and then five, the solar array shall not direct light or glare towards any occupied building or public road in such a ways to create distraction or danger. Again, I'm sure there's a better way to word that, but the idea or the gist.
Yes.
Uh, I guess I bring those, uh, thoughts and proposals to you and see if you guys have any thoughts, questions, or concerns.
Open it up, does anyone have anything?
I have one on, uh, it's item A application on thirty-two dash five sixty-one. There'd be five square feet mounted, not less than five feet above the grade. I guess a mowing situation would come into play. Don't want a weed patch underneath it, non-maintained of sorts. I don't know.
Um, let me get to where you're at. Thirty-two, what?
Thirty-two, five sixty-one, solar energy system applications. Small-scale solar energy collection system is defined in by the ordinance. And then it says, "The section does not apply to solar energy collections, reflection service, less than five square feet."
Yep, okay, so, um, I, I get what you're saying, but, uh,
Yeah.
Here's what I think this is saying. So, what we're talking about is an ordinance that, you know, applies to solar arrays.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they, they gotta have permits, they, you know, have to be attached to a building, all these requirements that we've listed in there. Well, this specific section is saying is, "The section does not apply to a solar collector with a surface of less than five square feet and mounted less than five feet above the ground." So, I'm sure, um, for instance, um, cause my wife and I have these, if you have a solar light, which, uh, you know, is
A little light, ornamental light.
Yeah, they just put it into the ground. These rules would not apply to that. That's what it's saying.
Okay. That's what it applies to.
That is exactly correct.
So, uh, I don't think we're saying it has to be mounted five feet up, or it has to be less than five square feet. We're just saying, if it is these things, all the rules don't apply to it.
Okay, that's more like them.
Thank you. So while you guys are thinking about it, I'll give you a chance to read more on it. Mr. Moore, did you have any other thoughts about ground-based systems, which I didn't cover?
Um, not really, the only, uh, comment I think I have on these is that, um, when you think about them as a primary use, they're also, makes me wonder if it's a primary use that might kick it into a larger, larger-scale type of system where the point of the operation would be to pull electricity back to the grid instead of supplementing electricity on the site, which is what the arrays are typically used for. Um, I think I agree with Mr. Womack, though, I mean, these are not likely to be used as a primary use on commercial properties. You don't have the physical space at this point to have a large-scale solar. Hundreds or thousands of acres.
So, city is in possession of some property.
Mm-hmm.
And fifteen acres or so.
Mm-hmm.
Which could possibly see this in the future. Um, I guess that's what I was thinking about. Of course, zoning doesn't apply to the city. Um, but we would wanna be as compliant as possible with our own rules. Um, but you're right, beyond that, there's really not any parcels really big up in the community for that.
Otherwise, um, I think these provisions that Mr. Womack has proposed are pretty consistent with what we've done in other places. Um, not everyone requires a special land use permit for the ground-mounted system. Sometimes they're just subject to a little more scrutiny. Similar to the, to the setback requirements and stuff that are, that are called out in here, so, um, that might be something that we might want to think about, just in terms of process, if we need to have everyone pull a panel in, in their yard. Maybe it makes sense to you, we typically don't require that. Um, but it might be worth kind of the, that's the only part that I would, I would kind of hesitate on a little bit, just cause it, I can see those getting approved pretty much all the time. And when you're approving a whole bunch of special land use permits, then you kind of say, well, so, um, let's say it's, 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 it's a bad idea, it's just something that kind of jumped out as new. Hasn't been standard practice so far.
And just as a counterpoint to that, um, while I agree, um, and generally speaking, pretty much anything would be approved, because it's a fairly simple standard to meet. Sometimes you do these things not because of the, uh, the fact that they're almost certainly gonna get approved, um, but that you want to provide the public the opportunity and notice, uh, that this is going to be done. Because, um, solar panels and wind, uh, windmills have been a significant, uh, public interest in townships not far from here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so you certainly don't want to be accused of hiding stuff from the public, or despite the fact that it might be, uh, approved, that people sometimes wanna have their say.
I, I could definitely see making a distinction between, uh, the smaller uses residentially, not necessarily having to have a public hearing versus a larger commercial slash industrial use. Because of the, the private versus the commercial nature of the two.
Even though it's a ground-based system?
I mean, if a small but ground-based system in Matt's backyard that he wants so badly, uh, joking, um, is one thing versus whether or not we're gonna put a solar farm in the town.
Yeah.
Um, as far as public sentiment.
So, um, change it from all requiring special land uses to requiring a special land use if it's on, uh, our, I'm sorry, B1 or I1 property, commercial or industrial property.
Now, the only thing that concerns me about that, the only reason why I would leave special land use in there. We go back and use Matt again. If he just went and put this ground array system in, and then his neighbors did not like it. Now, they kick up a fuss, they did not have a chance to know that it was coming.
Hundred-foot ladder. Which is what happens with a special land use.
Right, and they didn't get that. So now, it's a headache for you, it's a headache for the city, it's a headache for everybody. And so, I don't know, do we want to mitigate that, or do we just wanna say, if it comes, it comes? I mean, that's the only thing I'm thinking is, because you can't please everybody, I understand that, but.
Isn't the point of the ordinance to help people be aware of what they can and cannot do, so people are aware of it too?
I think what John is saying is, um, to make you aware of what your neighbors are doing. Um, and I, I think this is one of those fifty-fifty toss-ups that, I mean, on one hand, it's your property. Your obnoxious neighbors who might be offended by anything. Um, I don't think we necessarily feel an obligation to inform them of everything that you're doing.
Right.
Um, now, obviously, we'd still have rules in place where you can't have the, uh, lint, um, shining into their, their windows at all hours of the day. You can't blind them, you can't have them be obnoxious. But we also don't necessarily have to have a public hearing about it and send out letters and all the other.
It's, uh, the burdensome thing is, uh, let the public know that this is gonna happen, but yet eliminate the, the process for a special, it's absolutely land use.
There's only so many, um, properties in the town that have three or four lots, you know, combined. Um, most people probably can't get more than twenty square feet of solar.
Very true.
Um, which I don't know if you'd wanna hold a public hearing on that.
No, you wouldn't, you know, and, 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 and it's like, oh, well, it's your property, too bad. You know, I get, I don't know how we would break out or, or separate the size of the solar array to trigger special land use. You know, where do you draw that fine line? It's impossible.
Yeah. In my thinking for, thinking that it might make sense to make them a permitted use, is that we don't require special land use permit for them to build a separate building. Build an accessory building that's, uh, all or visually, the impact is not different. Or how much you might have with a solar panel. However, he's right, so, so solar panels are rightly or wrongly perceived differently, or can be perceived differently by the public from someone just wanting to put up a hatch garage just over their boat. Even though visually, the impact is the same and aesthetically and everything else, they might say, eh, I have a problem with this, but I wouldn't have a problem if you just put up a garage.
Put a garage in there and put solar panels on it.
Also, I mean, you joke, but the ordinance says if it's
You can do that by right.
If it's on your building, then, yeah, by right.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's, no, no difference.
So, I, I like Mr. Conley's approach, um, if it's residential, permitted by rights, but some, you know, special land use, so it's commercial and industrial.
That sounds, that sounds good, I just, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that we were aware and I didn't know.
People will be made aware of the process if they choose to tune in, because we, this all has to be done.
Right.
With a public hearing, you know, this is not, we don't change these laws and ordinances by, uh, by, in the dead of the night. So, the solar panels don't work then anyway, so. Do you need anything else from us on that?
Extremely dry, and I appreciate that very much.
Put a sign up on all four corners of your property facing your adjacent neighbors that a solar array will be installed.
You know, so I was driving through a community the other day, and this community must have an ordinance on the blocks. So, when we do a special land use, we were, we send out letters to everybody within three hundred feet. And I think that's under Michigan's own movement. But in this community, uh, every property where there was a special land use, the developer, the property owner, had to put up a sign on their property saying, you know, "Special land use proposed, blah, blah, blah." Um, so I'm sure that's required by ordinance. Um. So I'll just throw it out there that we could do that.
No.
One client that does that for rezoning, you gotta put up a sign, they specify the size, the size of the letters, the whole nine yards.
Talk about a significant burden on the developer, um, but
They make money.
I mean, the city, for every single meeting we have, has a, a sandwich board sign that we put out in front of City Hall saying, "We have a meeting tonight." Cause we want people to know, and there's what, several thousand people drive past it all every day? I think the easiest way, the most convenient way for somebody to know where, where a special land use is going to occur, um, is, you know, having a sign on the property. Although, in the zoning, uh, administrator certi- certification process I'm going through right now, apparently, if you send a letter to somebody who's three hundred and ten feet away, you'd be sued for that, because you're treating, uh, uh, different, um, projects differently. So, anyways, I'll throw it out there that there are some communities that do that, we could do that if we wanted to, but I'm not
Yeah, it's like, we'll face that dragon when it happens.
So you had your hand up early, did you get what you wanted?
I would have, you know, thought like, just the adjacent property owners send them a letter that, then you get into the thing, well, you didn't notify the neighbor two doors, three doors down. Well, that ain't a good idea.
Yep, no.
Just let it go the way it is and let chips fall where they go.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so do you have what you need then to move a little bit farther?
I didn't hear any objections to any of those?
No. No, I, I'm, it seemed pretty
Good start.
Apart from the proposed change, um, from residential to, uh, commercial, industrial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we'll move on to item B, discussion on proposed removal of RR B1 and table of uses.
So, um, can't remember if you saw the original ordinance I put together, it was a god-awful ordinance. Um, I, with the clerk's assistance, went through the entire, you know, ordinance and tried to find every single time it says RR B1, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and then wrote a very extensive ordinance explaining why we're removing each section. Um, after discussing with municode, uh, they basically said, "Make it simple, just list all the ones you're aware of, and then just give a cart launch. Uh, remove all these because RRMB1 don't exist anymore." That's what I've done in this proposed ordinance, and then you guys are aware of the, uh, the problems we had with the old table of uses, which is that chart that we used to use, and then Mr. Johnson, uh, put together, you know, in the different sections, so it's a little bit easier to understand. Um, but we still have them both, this ordinance would get rid of that as well.
Great. There's nothing new from us other than tacit consent?
Uh, I think we're gonna need to hold a public hearing and then make a recommendation with City Council.
Okay. Um, wonderful. We'll move on then to discussion on box signs in a B2 zoning district.
Yeah, so, um, I've talked with all sorts of people about this, uh, the DDA, uh, you guys, I've talked with Mr. Moore about this, and I've driven around some of the other communities. Um, drove through Sparta, drove through Rockford, drove through Greenville, um, several of the communities down by Grand Rapids. And I've looked at their, uh, their ordinances. So, it does not appear to be the case, um, that anyone has an ordinance similar to what I originally proposed. We also, I also, did not see anywhere else where they prohibited box signs. So, the city's kind of in this position where we have so many box signs up and down Bean Street. Um, I don't know the origin of this ordinance, I wasn't here, Clint obviously was, cause you've been on this board for a million years. Um.
Longer.
What, Ms. Atchison or Mr. Hall?
Actually, both.
So.
At one time, they were, they had pole signs, and then those were forbidden, and they went and to go to box signs. And that's where we're at today.
So the ordinance prohibits box signs? So, did they prohibit pole signs and then prohibit box signs?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it also doesn't appear that this part of the ordinance has been enforced. Um, because there are signs out there, like at the brewery, which are clearly box signs. And that was business from what, twenty fifteen? So, you know, all sorts of problems are created when you don't follow your zoning ordinance. Um, but, you know, in light of what other communities are doing, um, in light of kind of the existence of box signs in this community, I guess it would be my recommendation that we, uh, modify the ordinance to allow box signs. Um, but you'll see in my proposal here that we kind of, you know, create this new definition of a panel sign, uh, which is what we also discussed last time, which are these really thin, plastic, really thin, um, aluminum signs, which are just kind of screwed into the wall. Uh, the question is, we basically wanna do an about-face and say, okay, we're gonna allow box signs now, but we're going to prohibit panel signs. And the way we could do this is require, um, all wall signs to have some sort of frame, which would essentially make them all box signs. It, it's a tough call, I mean, these panel signs are used because they're cheap. And sometimes businesses are not as well-capitalized as you might want them to. Uh, we are not either township. We don't have, you know, overly wealthy businesses coming in sometimes. And so, do we want to put a barrier up, uh, towards that type of business starting in our community? On the other hand, panel signs look bad. I think there's also a safety component, when you have a frame, I think that helps keep the sign in place versus a couple of drywall screws put into plywood on the side of the building. So, uh, you'll see a couple of recommendations there for if this is what we wanted to do, here's kind of how we could go about doing it. Uh, I did have some interesting thoughts in sub-part four there. So, curved lines having more than four edges, that is designed specifically to get rid of square and rectangular box signs, which I think are kind of boring. Um, and obviously, will stay in place for the next forty or fifty years and never get taken down. The square and rectangular signs are universal. Uh, might receive pushback on, uh, on that from businesses, and I'm not sure about the legality of it. Now, I think under the Zoning Enabling Act and case law, we have the authority to establish aesthetic values for the community. Uh, but it's something I would wanna run past the city attorney before we do something like that, if that's where we wanna go. Uh, and then finally, I did put a little thing here about panel signs, uh, we could consider those as temporary signs instead of simply prohibiting them. Um, but I suspect that if somebody wants a temporary sign, they're gonna use a fabric, kind of flexible sign, which are even significantly more expensive than a panel sign. So we could allow it, but I suspect nobody would actually wanna use it. So, I guess I present that to you to see where you guys wanna go.
Is there, so, in the hierarchy of signs, from the panel sign, is there one that is just a little bit more expensive that we could say, "Don't do the panel, do this one, but we're also not going to take the new businesses and run them away?"
So, let's, let's make sure there's something clear here, and there is no hierarchy of signage. Um, it's up to the community to create community standards.
No, no, what I meant was, price-wise, I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
You know, I've wondered if there's some sign company out there that would give me thirty quotes on various signs about, you know, "Well, what if we did this, and what if we did that," versus this versus that. Um, I, I, I think it's pretty obvious that there's a hierarchy in cost. You know, the more complex, the more curved lines, the more zazz, you know, the more expensive a sign.
The more.
Um, which is why fabric flexible signs are the cheapest, panel signs are next.
Mm-hmm.
Probably box signs after that, and then you get into, uh, rolling letters and punch-through signs and
What about the hanging signs, like we see like the Redbird?
Yep.
Could you do something like that within a budget?
So that's what I was gonna get into next, which is
I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're fine, you're just one step ahead of me. Um, so, I think there is actually a sufficient amount of variation in the ordinance to allow for signage
Mm-hmm.
that isn't necessarily panel signs or box signs.
Yeah.
And you, you bring up a great example, uh, the Redbird uses what I'd call projecting signs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just had another business in the past couple of weeks who proposed what would otherwise be a double-sided panel sign, but it, it was projected. Um. Uh, it was basically gonna hang under one of the underhang, um, one of the, what do you call them, awnings?
Oh, okay.
Problem is, it was about a two-foot, uh, high sign, and those awnings are about eight feet off the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Meaning that the bottom would have been at six feet, and our ordinance specifically says the bottom has to be at eight feet minimum.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, there was another panel sign, I'm sorry, a box sign, which had been presented to me, and I had to say no, because box signs are not permitted in B2. Which had been presented to me and I had to say no, because box signs are not permitted in B two. But it was small enough to be mounted as a projecting sign. So it's basically a box sign, but it's projected. Um of course, you also have uh awning signage. Um you know, the bakery, their sign is painted onto the side of the building. Um if you have a window, anything in the window on the inside of the building is totally free from permitting. You can do whatever you want there. You just can't block, you know, completely the window. Um so there, in my opinion, I think there are ample avenues of signage. Uh that don't necessarily require a panel sign or a box. But again, this is kind of like your guys' community standards. Um and setting the policy for what we allow in the sign, in the city for sign.
Yeah, I would like panel signs. I would like to see those. I mean, I I get we can't get rid of box signs, but the panel signs, they look bad. But if there's a way for a new business, you know.
I I, if I were to summarize what you've got here, it's basically saying, put a frame around your sign. To make it a little bit more substantial, or if you still really want a panel sign, you can project it from the building. And that's like a a unique kind of frame. Um in the fact that you're projecting it, uh but. We we would prefer not to have just frameless, thin metal signs attached to buildings.
Yep, so the only quibble I would say is that. A panel sign, and I I might be wrong on this because I haven't read my definition. A panel sign is a thin metal sign which is mounted on a wall. If it's mounted as projecting and double sided, it's no longer a panel sign, even though it is technically the same material.
The same, the same sign, if you were to put it in that orientation, is no longer a panel sign.
Yes, we just need to make sure it's not fast enough in the building.
So that's part of it, and I think we're on, this is my opinion, but I think we'd be on pretty good legal grounds to say. Uh you know, part of it is, it's a safety issue. If you're mounting it into a frame which holds it and has designed mounting points. Uh that makes it a safer sign than if it's just screwed into a wall.
I think somebody might argue though, that those signs have four points in there where you could go screw through it. They might argue that's built at mountain points.
They can make all the arguments you want. They'd have to go to court to prove it because you guys would establish what the laws.
You would have.
And the courts generally don't insert themselves into the minds of the planning commission and city council, making a determination what's. Safety standards they want to have for their community.
I'm just trying to make sure that we can get it as defined as possible.
We'd have to have a pretty clear definition of of the projecting sign though, because if you're gonna make the argument it's safer. Yet you're hanging it out in space. There have to be some pretty clear design elements that are involved that reflect safety in that projecting sign.
Yep, so there there is a projecting sign ordinance. We probably could be beefed up a little bit. Um I'm sorry, projecting sign, the definition and then some requirements. Um but, you know, really I'm focusing on wall signs, which is what both box signs and panel signs are. But no, you you're you're absolutely right. While we're doing this, we might want to address some of these other signage to make it a little bit more clear that at least in the B two district. We are setting standards. Here's what we are promoting. You know, we're promoting box signs. We're promoting um projecting signs. We are not, we don't want panel signs.
And to what you said, putting a frame around a panel sign, well, if they just went and took some two by two. And glued it around and tried to make that as, oh, look, it has a frame around it. We don't want that either, because that's still not gonna look good, you know what I mean? So that's why the panel signs just need to go, because there's nothing you can do with them. And they also hide, because some of these businesses aren't all the way out. Some of them kind of tuck in. So a wall hanging sign would be better, or I mean a projecting sign.
Well, I agree. Of course, you can't force a business to have good signage standards, but uh you're absolutely right. I I. Surprised with how Main Street is oriented and how uh high vehicular um count we have on Main Street. That more businesses don't use projecting signs. Um one of the things I'm working with the DDA on is putting together a signage grant program.
Yeah.
Because there are a number of businesses in in Main Street who haven't changed their signs in the entire time I've been here. Um and probably in the time that Mr. Hall's been here. Um and if we can throw some money at them to improve their signage, it improves the city overall. But before we get to that point, with the sign ordinance, so I've been talking a lot, Mr. Moore, you got something to say or add to all that?
Um yeah, specifically, so I think um to your point about the projecting signs. I think we can define panel sign, projecting sign, and other types of sign. Clear enough that we can differentiate between the two, because that's the hardest thing to do, right? So if we're talking about. Anything that is mounted flat to a building is gonna be some kind of a wall. Underneath that, then we can define box signs, panel signs. Um so I'm not too concerned about that. Um it feels like something that 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 we can make work. Have to think a little bit about some of the other wall signs that we do want to permit. Would not be box signs or panel signs and what that looks like and how we define that. Um but that's something we can kind of figure out as we start to make changes to the actual ordinance. That's the only kind of observation I have in listening is that I guarantee there are going to be businesses that want wall sign. So if they're if in that box sign, if uh panel signs, what is that going to look like? How are we going to make sure that what they're doing is gonna be, you know, satisfied? Hard to legislate taste, so we have to, you know, figure out the right language to use to. Tell them this is what we want and then make it as easy as possible for them to do that thing that we want.
I have another question slash suggestion. We we kind of have two problems here. We have one that we have an ordinance that's written at the moment that makes it difficult to enforce. Because we haven't been enforcing it and it's it's unclear as to what what a box sign is relative to the other thing. We also have an issue of trying to decide the future of what we want the city to look like. Do we have to decide both of these at the same time? Because I would like to take some time if we're going to a pre, if we're going to have a thematic. Uh view of what we want downtown to look like, to really get into that. Including the signs, but including other elements as well. While giving you the relief you need at the moment, so that you could at least enforce what you've got.
Well, so I mean, you guys can't tell me that. The city council passes the laws.
Of course.
And right now, the law says box signs are prohibited. Um so can we go and say, uh box signs are now permitted? And then have the city council pass that? I mean, that's gonna take three to four months, just to do that portion of it. Um I think, again, this is my opinion, but I think we're making significant progress here. Um I, yeah, this is my opinion, because you guys haven't told me one way or the other, but. It seems that the uh prohibiting box signs is not what we want. Um sounds like we at least have some support for the box signs versus panel signs idea. Um I think we can do a better job of defining uh projecting signs and flag signs and. And all these things that we might want to promote in the downtown. I I haven't heard anybody say anything about the curved line requirements or the more than four sides requirements or anything. Um of course, I had a little bit of fun with that. Really, it's something we want to do?
We we could totally get to that and I'm not actually trying to um negate what you've done because I generally agree with it. I just want, I can see the discussion can go on exponentially about how we want things to look. And I'm trying to narrow it down to, okay, we're dealing with the sign issue at the moment. Um but we may want to consider all the elements of downtown in the future and not. Try to forecast them now into what we're doing with the sign ordinance. That's all I will say.
Um would it be helpful for at the next meeting for me to put together a memo and a detailing, you know? If we allow the box signs and the panel signs as are, you know, indicated here, what type of signage is permitted in the downtown? Does that help?
I mean, right now?
If we change the requirement, uh prohibition against box signs.
Um, well, I'm also thinking that what you're talking about, Clint, would be like more of a in the master plan. Area too, right? As we talked about on that, um I do know that. I'm trying, I'm remembering, because we use sign, we did signs a lot on the planning commission. And I think I'm remembering that they were trying to go more canopy and projection, pro- projected signs. I think that's what that was. And um, yeah, because I was trying to remember, but if a new business comes in to a building. And there's already a box sign there, is that, like, then they can use it or would they have to change their sign?
So generally speaking, you can't force somebody to uh remove something that's already there. Um my office's policy has generally been uh that if there's an existing box sign that you can remove a panel. Replace the panel without affecting the size, structure, mounting, electricity, anything like that. That you can replace the panel without even permitting. Because it's essentially the same sign. You're just replacing a little piece of plastic. Um so that's kind of where you get into the, once a box sign exists, it never goes away.
Right, so that might be how we ended up with so many box signs still there, but like you said, the brewery did there.
Yeah.
And I don't know how that came about. I can't remember.
Well. Sometimes running the city is very frustrating because um there are a lot of property owners, a lot of businesses. Who just kind of do whatever they want and then kick up a fuss when you say, hey, you can't do that. Very much so the attitude of uh beg for forgiveness later. And so signage gets put up all the time in this community that we notice after it's been put up. And then the city has to be the bad guy and say, sorry, you can't do that. So I'm sure for the eleven months before I was here, um and then maybe under some previous managers who maybe didn't pay as much attention as I do. Uh science was just put up regardless of what law said. I want to get to a point where we have standards that we can all agree on that meet the aesthetic uh values of the community. Um and then have a a enforcement mechanism, which hopefully we've been effective, you know, on the last couple of years. Um but you're right, it's a question of, how big do we want to make this? This could be as simple as us saying to the city council, here's what we're thinking. Or we could make it a part of the discussion on the master plan. Um which I I don't know how serious you want to get into that. This is why I bring you guys the tough questions. This is not something for me to answer.
I'm trying to to get the argument smaller, not bigger at the moment, so.
Which you did, Ms. Atchison.
Well, no, that I was just.
But 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 make time for the argu- the later argument that might have to happen.
Be more of a, yeah, like, that's why I said more of a master plan.
I thought the last meeting, Mr. Moore said, we cannot outlaw any signs, like box signs, things like that.
We have a whole section that we're gonna.
You can't ban them based on what they say.
Yeah, okay, okay. See, this is where in my brain, I am getting so, okay.
Yeah, but you can't regulate them based on what type of sign they are, as long as you're focusing on, not the word. So ground mounted versus pole mounted, lit versus unlit.
Okay.
All that kind of stuff, that's all fine. You can regulate that whichever way you want. You can't say that a. Uh you know, church sign has to be this way and the business sign has to be this way and the U S state sign has to be this way. Then you're actually treating. Them differently based on what they say, and that's where the problem is.
Okay.
The type of sign that we're doing.
Yeah, right, and I was I was getting that confused in my head, because I remember last meeting it was, you can't.
I mean, I think they have to be a little careful as as Mr. Womack pointed out, that we have to make sure that we're. Um the the regulations or the different sign types, like there is a, there's a reasoning behind it. Behind them that we can articulate, so whether it's safety, um you know, community aesthetics. Size, visual clutter, all those kinds of things that typically come in with signs. We have to be able to express what those are. And we're coming up with the regulations and not just, eh, I don't like this, why, I don't know, I don't like it, that's not gonna be different. So um being able to to talk about what you like and what you don't like and why you don't like it.
Sounds like Mr. Womack was still waiting for an opinion on especially item five, where you're going into more specificity on what. Box sign glitter could not look like. Um this is on page fifteen.
Or on page.
Number, number four is where you're saying. Number five, you go into more depth. That's where you talk about the curved edges and the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Live straight lines.
I'm looking at something else I thought you.
It's at the top of page fifteen, if you can see it. Um. Do we want to institute any kind of requirements that they can't be rectangles or squares? Basically, I'm guessing that's what this is, is intending. Or are we okay with rectangles or squares? We don't know yet. We don't know yet, but that's that's the, that's the question.
One unified, one unified. Shape would look magnificent driving through the B two. But how?
That's that's a square, a rectangle.
It it, no, it's not a square, it's not a rectangle, it's a mess. And like if we had small circle, like projected circles that come off the building, I think that would look great, but I don't know where we.
I don't think we can determine shape, but. I mean, from what I I thought we had a.
That's what he's gonna do again.
I think you.
If illegal ground there.
Probably could, I think. I I think there are ways you can make the argument both that's community aesthetics, also I could see a safety argument. I mean, it might be tenuous, but a round sign is much less likely when it falls on your head to kill you than a sign with sharp points on.
And they'll have to have a weight requirement and. I'm joking. Well, I I also don't want to stymie people's creative juices too. That's the one thing I'm worried about if we start putting.
See, I I see it as the opposite problem. I see we need to encourage them to be creative, because the square and rectangular signs are the cheapest.
No, I get that. That that's what I'm saying. I I don't know if I'm all about telling people how to do it, because I would rather have. The ability to let people let their creative juices flow with how they want to represent their, within the confines of what we've put out there. Because I I I agree with the safety and the aesthetics. I think those are the two big things I keep thinking about when I look at. Signage around town or other places I go, and sometimes I'm like, those are ugly. I don't know how the business is gonna survive. Those challenges that being political challenges too, because you might have business owners that. Resist being mandated to have. That's not a strictly planning conversation, but it's the reality of what.
Right. And I hate to be the one to say it, because of course, you know, I sure like being in control sometimes. But sometimes, uh maybe this is more of an economic problem than a planning or a city government problem. Um and you know, good businesses will invest the money. There are good businesses in this town who do invest their money. And there are some businesses, whether um they've kind of just stopped promoting their own businesses or they don't have. Capitalization to do it, uh that they have lower quality signs. Maybe we need to encourage higher quality businesses, and maybe we need to encourage a. A desire to put up high quality signage, make the downtown look nice, which is partially what the DDA does, right? So I'm not sure, again, I like to be in control, but I'm not sure this is a situation we where we can be.
And this is one of those places, when we start making requirements. Beyond the pa- beyond the the standard, beyond the same rectangle that everyone uses. It'd be nice if we could tie that to an overall vision that we're trying to promote. Gives us a little bit more, if we're if we're gonna say based upon aesthetics, it would be nice if the aesthetics are a complete view, not just. One aspect. And so that's where, while I don't want to necessarily have that argument tonight about. What is gonna be in our master plan or where we're gonna go in the long run, it certainly would help support the argument. One way or the other, if we could say, you know, we're gonna galard the whole place and it's everything's gotta be alpine. Which I don't want to do, because I've seen galard.
Which I don't want to do, because I've seen Gaylord, but. You know, but that's, it's an argument we can make if we've already done the legwork to. Promote those other elements.
So I, I was not a here at the time, um, again, maybe Mr. Hall was, but my understanding, there was a point in time where the entire city was. Uh, raised wooden walkways where the sidewalks were.
Yep.
Kind of like an old.
Western theme.
Western themed time.
There's city council was a planning commission.
So, I mean, there are things you can do, uh, like that.
Not necessarily saying we have to do that, just saying it's, it's. If you're gonna think about one element, you should look at all the elements cohesively. Um, if that's what we're trying to do, if it's, if this is just an argument about whether we can put box signs up, then, then it's kind of hard to. It, it limits the aesthetic aspect of the argument.
Yeah, I wish I had a better answer for your solution, but this is complex stuff and. I don't think, I, I don't think there is a right answer, to be honest.
Do you, does the planning commission want another crack at this, have they had a chance to think about item five? About these design elements with box signs? Do, or do we, do, do, do we feel one way or the other on that?
Lots of good forceful opinions, though.
Exactly.
Well, I, I, I do agree that we need to have something that makes the aesthetics look good in town, right? I mean, the panel sign screwed to a wall does not look good. And maybe the. New business owner is not savvy enough to realize that's not really the best marketing way after, to get somebody walking the door. Uh, it'd be, I like the idea of a framed sign. That's box or panel, you know, something that looks aesthetically pleasing, but I don't know how to put that in wording. To make it so we can actually get into the elements, that's kind of why I rely on you guys up there.
I, I think for right now at least, um, it sounds like we at least have somewhat of a support for that box sign versus panel sign.
Yep.
So we can start working on that language, um, but. Mr. Conley, while I totally agree with everything you're saying, I just don't know how to get there. I'm not sure Mr. Moore knows how to get there. Was you, did you do the planning and zoning for Gaylord?
We didn't.
I, I think you're probably an idiot.
So I mean, a little bit about what you're speaking to is almost like, so there are communities that have. It's not a theme, but I mean, you can go through a process where you can look at the downtown design. If you want, you can get extremely detailed in terms of materials and everything else. Colors, sign, you can regulate very, very carefully all of that stuff, the question is whether you want to or not, and there's arguments kind of on both sides of that, right? Not one is right or wrong, but some people will say, I don't want to live in what feels like a theme park, other people will say, this is amazing, now this is exactly what I want.
We actually did this two platters ago. We did a P U D. I mean, I'm getting some nods here from people that were here at the time. I'm not sure that the city agreed with the elements of the P U D, it felt like it was, and I'm not sure, it, it's very interesting about whether or not it was actually passed. Because we have a whole lot of argument on that, it seemed to have like evaporated.
Disappeared.
So one thing I will add to what Mr. Moore indicated is in addition to, um, the complexity and some people love it, some people won't. Uh, I think we need to take a lesson from the mixed use district, which I suspect was Carmen Aventino. Um, which encompassed a significant portion of what is now the industrial district on the west side of town. There's only so much, uh, rule and regulation that you can enforce on somebody, uh, to make a property not worth use. So, for example, the Northern Lights Building, the west end of Ash Street. Those are never going to be pretty night commercial buildings. Um, and there is nobody who's gonna take a build, an industrial building and say, well, you know, I'm gonna tear it down and put up a Bavarian themed restaurant or something. You're just not going to do it, it makes no sense financially. So we can impose these things and it still will never occur. Because somebody's not going to invest a million dollars in creating a Bavarian themed restaurant on Main Street either. Because it's just, it's too much cost and expense for the developer.
I don't think we need to be macking on.
And, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even, God help me, don't, I am not trying to make this a theme park, I don't want to be celebration.
You lost me there. I want this to be Main Street Downtown Disney.
Exactly.
With, with the castle at the library.
The point was, it's, there's different levels of thought, that's all I was trying to say, we can think about this as an overall vision for where the downtown is, or we could think about these. And I was trying to separate the argument, and I apologize, I, what took us way out in the weeds, I don't want to do that, let's come back to the signs. Because this is not worth doing tonight.
Well, I think, uh, for not belaboring the point, I think Mr. Moore and I at least have the semblance of a, 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 a good step to take, which is. Maybe further defining some of these box signs, panel signs, projecting signs. Um, and then bring that back to you guys for a little bit more discussion, give you guys some opportunity to. Think about, uh, maybe what overall aesthetics. There's some other way to go about doing this, but at least it'll give me, Mr. Moore and I some, some things to work on.
Uh, we have, I'm thinking about this, is a few communities where we work where we have kind of a library of graphics that we, we get a job of illustrating a lot of these different types of sign. Lacks and wall signs and. Arkeys and all that kind of stuff, so that's, I think this is gonna really help. If we add something like this, I think that'll help people understand what kind of. All, all the things that. Have a better understanding of what all this is.
Let's move on then to item D. A discussion on an ordinance to prohibit the conversion of any single family home, home to two family or multifamily use. So you guys will recall, I think Mr. Johnson was still here at the time, that we've got a number of neighborhoods in the community which are primarily single family, uh, use only. But for whatever reason, they've been zoned R two and R three. This includes the first and second phases of the Prairie Run neighborhood. This includes almost all the property, um, between Cherry Street and Muskegon on the west side of Fifth Street. Um, it also includes Sixth Street South by the, um. Now the J Star Building, yes, was the J Star Building, display back building. Um, but they're all single family neighborhoods, but there are two and R three zone, for whatever reason. Now, my understanding of the city zoning ordinance is that because there are two R three zoning, that they theoretically by right. Could convert a single family home into a duplex or multifamily home. Which has been a problem throughout the rest of the community. So we had talked at the time with Mr. Johnson of undertaking a significant rezoning of the entire, uh, city. Eliminating R two, R three properties, um, because I don't know why they resoned that way in the first place, if they're all single family homes. Um, but that's a huge amount of work, um, and frankly, you're gonna run into problems of people saying. Well, you know, I've got two or three acres, I'd like to put a duplex here or a quadplex or whatever. Uh, versus somebody who's got a single family home with two or three acres saying, I don't want to live next to an apartment complex next door. So, um, at the very least, a good place to start, because this is fairly simplistic. Is, you know, uh, we had a fire recently in a single family home that had been converted into a duplex. And I think my fire chief would tell you that, you know, part of the reason why this home suffered significant damage is because it wasn't built to duplex safety standard. Um, you know, when you have got more than one family living together, the fire risk goes up significantly. And so there are fire breaks in the, in the roof section, uh, there's certain requirements about the. Burn rating of the interior wall, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so I think there's some good safety reasons, we don't want to see these, uh, homes converted, I think there's also good zoning reasons. You know, if you build a single family home. And it's in an R two district or whatever. You know, you might have ten foot side setbacks, you might have six foot side setbacks, but I don't think this board would have allowed that. Had we known it was gonna be a duplex or multifamily at the onset, if that makes sense. So we don't necessarily want to allow somebody to convert a single family home because they wouldn't meet the side setbacks. Rear or front side setbacks. Anyway, so I, I guess my question and concern is, uh, is are we willing to have an ordinance that says. If your property was built as a single family home, um, it cannot be converted to a duplex or multifamily. So, uh, I'm sure this would have to be run past the attorneys. Um, and I'm sure Mr. Moore has some comments on it. Um, but it's at least something that I thought of instead of undertaking a massive rezoning of the entire city. That this might be a way to protect our citizens and the neighborhoods. From the problems we've seen, you know, in other parts of the city.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Womack, so I guess just a couple of, one concern I, or brief report on this, or it's a, a memo, so. From a planning perspective, I. I would have questions because the, at, at the end of the day, whether it's converted or whether it's a brand new building. And uses the same, impact, is, is, is the same as what two, two families is living in a house, whether or not it's a converted. So I would, um, certainly be, be interested in terms of how that would work from a zoning perspective and if it's. If we can justify. If we, again, if we can articulate the land use impact that we're trying to. Manage by banning conversions, but allowing a ground out. I agree that a wholesale rezoning of a whole bunch of the city zoning districts. Through to R one. Is reasonable, is definitely politically challenging, um, and you wouldn't have to notice everybody because you'd be doing a whole bunch of them. But, you know, again, still, it's, it could definitely sow confusion, you would be creating a whole bunch of conforming homes and non-conforming buildings. Look at that very, very carefully, um, and it sounds like cities already looked at anyways. This is just kind of a general observation, this is kind of going a little bit against the grain from how. Most communities are addressing housing issues these days. So a lot of communities are moving towards a, a, a place of being more permissive and allowing more types of housing in more districts, more. More duplexes, more threeplexes, more quadplexes, et cetera, et cetera. So this, um, while I don't disagree with the justification for it, just as an observation, this is kind of. Going against the trend of how many communities are sort of looking at.
I can just jump in on that real quick, so I, I understand exactly what you're talking about, but. Um, I might even go so far as to say that the city was ahead of the current trend. Because these R two, R three zoning districts have been on the books for many years.
Yep.
Um, but we're not talking about that, if somebody were to come and have a piece of property. In an R two district and they have the setbacks and the space and everything required to build a brand new duplex. There's no objection, that's a by right built. Um, and we have significant portions of our city where we allow that. Um, I think what we're talking about is preserving the single family nature of these neighborhoods that were built as a single family neighborhood. Um, just because they were built in an R two district, we don't want to take thirty homes and now make them sixty homes. Significantly increasing the density, um, and exacerbating parking problems and all sorts of other problems.
And so like in some places in, in, in Grand Rapids, for example, instead of, so they've sort of dipped their toe into the water a, a little bit, so instead of allowing. Family everywhere, in terms of, of, of conversions, they only allow these kinds of conversions on. Where else? So there are some other ways that, that we could also look at where you just sort of, where you drastically limit the overall number of conversions that would be allowed. So instead of having the potential for every single family to become a two family, might just be allowing, you know, ten or ten percent. Certain circumstances over it, maybe it's not a corner lot, but maybe if, if you have frontage on certain streets, so like in. There's a couple of communities like in, in, in Grand Haven that have, in those, these things they call key streets. So parcels that have frontage on key streets are afforded slightly different rules than parcels that do not have. Look at limiting that way too. That. Might be a little more workable in terms of. I think that I, I keep coming back to about a conversion, is it, is it, the land use is the same. Family home at the end of the day. Two family dwelling converted or a two family dwelling built from the ground up, is still a two family dwelling, and I can see someone making an argument, say, look. Two family dwelling is permitted by right, I'm trying to make this a two family dwelling. Why can't I do that? This is a better Jeff, Jeff slogan question than it is a question. I wouldn't, I'm not sure how that part of it would work.
Can we address it with a, a, a conversion being a special land use, so that at least we can make sure that they are. Meeting their requirements that would be inherent, if, if you were building from new, what, a two, a two family residence? Because we have, one of the issues is, is we have one family residence that were never built to be a two family residence, then we have the safety issue. This creates an opportunity to bring the plan in front of us to verify that it's being done i- in the proper way.
And, and I thought about that, and I, 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 I think so, and there are some communities that seem to. Call, it, it, it seems to treat the conversion as a land. In and of itself, even though it's probably not. That is something that is probably worth exploring, it's something. Because if, if the concern is simply we want to make sure that they're safe and they're done correctly and they've done up the code and they're not. They're not significantly impacting or negatively affecting the aesthetics and the single family character of, of the neighborhood, you can design two family dwellings that. Fit in very nicely in a single family neighborhood. And so that would give the planning commissioner a, an oversight and say, okay, this has to be a single family character and you have to make sure. Following the proper fire protection. Moving everything up to code so there's not.
Now, to build on that, um, so, you know, this might be a lot of, uh, a hull of blue about nothing, but. Had the city been following its own ordinances for the last forty years, you know, you've got a single family home which is built with a driveway that you can fit two cars on. Um, which is what's required under the ordinance, it must have parking. And then you put a wall in the middle, now you got two families living there, you should have parking for four cars at that point. There's all sorts of conversions that were done where that was never established. So I think about the homes in, uh, the Prairie Run neighborhood. Um, generally speaking, they have driveways you can fit four cars on. Okay, so they might meet that requirement. But now, you know, if you are trying to establish a two family home next to what's still a single family home. Maybe there is, um, some setback requirements that can't be. Maybe there is a screening requirement that they can't meet.
Same square footage of the unit.
So, well, you'd be surprised the number of apartments we find that have been established for forty years that are five square feet.
No.
It's ridiculous, um, but they're established and they were forty years ago, so I'm stuck with it, but, um. So it might be a situation where, yeah, it's theoretically possible, but as they were built, they simply cannot meet the duplex required standard. So maybe that's something I'd need to put a little bit more time and effort into looking at. You know, if you were to attempt to convert this, would you meet the setbacks, would you meet the parking standards? Reening standards and all these things that we otherwise should have been requiring for forty years, but apparently did not.
Well, the biggest thing would, would stymie it or stop that division would be the year the house was constructed. The older homes were built with the old balloon construction, which were, there's no fire stop. So from the ground floor clear to the attic. And that's what we're seeing, and in particular, the one apartment over here that caught fire. It was in a old construction. And it just went right on through, and then you get the electrical, usually knob and tube in them, you know, everything would have to be brought up to today's current standards.
So that's another good point is, and again, I, I don't know if this is possible, but we say, okay. You want to convert your single family home from nineteen oh five to a duplex, well, you have to update all your electrical to twenty eighteen standards, your fire safety to twenty eighteen standards, your.
All your voltage codes.
Yep, so that's a way we could do it.
That would eliminate it, you know, anybody trying to, you know, because theoretically it'd be cheaper for. That would eliminate it, you know, anybody trying to, you know, because theoretically it'd be cheaper from the demolition of the whole building and build a new one.
That's a question then perhaps for the city attorney, whether we can impose those standards based purely on the conversion.
Well, safety factor alone, wiring and fire stop.
But I did do a little bit of research on this, thinking, well, okay, um, apartments generally are required to have, um, sprinkler systems installed. Apparently you cannot require that.
There's so many, yeah, we we tried that.
See, you're you're a step ahead of me, but, uh, something I looked into and apparently it's not something you can do.
Uh, the one we were successful with was to, on West Street, there was, uh. Old Network ran a home there, and we did require them. They did put sprinklers in there. That was the only one that I knew of that was successfully passed, all the rest of them.
So, uh, again, I guess we could talk about this all night, but, um, or is the board at least in favor of looking into some of these things that would help. Prevent and or limit the number of single family homes that are converted to two family or multifamily use, or are you kind of okay with the process the way it is?
I would say from this day forward, no more conversions from single family to duplex until we get this sorted out.
Um, so I could take it to the city council to ask for a moratorium, at least until we're sure about the legality of these things. Um, which would then, I guess, give us the, uh, the time necessary, although it's not something that they're beating down my door to do. Um, but I do. One of my biggest things I'm trying to accomplish here in this community is setting up the future. Because of so many problems that were created in the past. Um, so I want to make sure that whatever we do is going to be effective and.
Long lasting.
And is not overly complicated. Um, because some of this stuff is found in ten different locations in the zoning ordinance. And, you know, it requires somebody who's very well versed in planning and zoning to effectively administer. I don't want to do that, I want to make it simple for the future.
How many planning commissioners or planning consultants have we had in the last ten years?
Or even zoning administrators. There are some people who sit in the city manager's office here, because you, it's the same job. Who I don't think really understood planning and zoning. You know, I think I've got a bit of a leg up because of my legal background, um, but, hell, I was just at a conference. There are plenty of city managers who don't understand planning and zoning.
Oh, but there are not many that do. Unfortunately, and here we are.
So, in any case, um, I'm not hearing a lot of opposition to at least exploring this going forward.
To see it tightened up. Because we don't have these, these really, and I know you've brought, um, city council have been fighting this. Battle for a while now with, it's very unclear as to what's allowed and what's not allowed, and how things got the way they were, it'd be nice if we had stuff. Well documented from this point on, under clear parameters. Can't change past very easily.
Okay, well, so I guess Mr. Moore and I will continue to work on this issue. And, uh, keep bringing stuff back to you until we have a good, I guess, firm, um, suggestion to make to the city council.
Okay, this takes us, uh, to open discussion versions on the agenda and correspondence, before I start this, um. Mr. Nixon, I might have to get up and walk here in a second, because I'm having a leg cramp. So if I just throw this at you, just wanted to let you know.
Running.
Because I might not be able to talk if it, if it grabs up again, that's why I'm sitting so far back.
Want my stick?
No, I'm good, I'm good, but, um, so, uh, item one is the calendar that we have every time. There is, uh, item two and item three are some second readings on the industrial facade, the parking ordinance, is there anything we need to address on those?
Uh, just for the public to clarify, that's notice to you that the ordinances you recommended to the city council are getting a second reading of the city council.
Um, item four, uh, the twenty-two minute index report that, I'm guessing Mr. Johnson put that all together for us. There, and is there anything else we need to? Thirty West Cherry, item five, Thirty West Cherry SLU letter, that's just, we're reporting back to us what we did with that.
That's me giving them a letter to be used for their bank purposes after you guys made the decision, which was.
And then there are three nonconforming approvals, is there anything that we need to know about that or?
Oh, I I approved, I think, two or three more today, which will be in your next agenda. Um, but again, this is part of their work, good records kept or created over the last forty years, I'm doing my best to put it on your agenda, city council agenda. Then at some point, once we get to, you know, approving most or all of these, I'd like to address these in a specific section in the master plan. That is recorded in the future as well. For your notification.
Well, staff comments, city manager?
Well, it's been a long day for me, I started at seven with the CBDT meeting, I had a two o'clock library meeting, a six o'clock city council meeting, and now a seven o'clock, uh, planning commission meeting. Um, I was at a conference last week, um, those were both cathartic and educational. Then on Thursday and Friday this week, I'll be in Mount Pleasant doing a zoning administrator certification program. Um, but otherwise, you know, you guys continue to do the heavy lifting, I know these things are not always easy, in fact, I'd say they're never easy. Um, but stuff you do, you know, helps make the community a better place, so I appreciate that.
You, uh, city clerk? Okay, planning commission members, do you have anything? Well, as a planning commission member, I will say thank you for, uh. Digging through all this stuff and echo what the city manager just said. Uh, city council representative.
Uh, we have a special meeting today for the sidewalk grants, and we, um, okayed a, um, bid, so that's going to get going. So, looks looking good. I don't believe so.
I'll refer to the planning consultant then.
I had.
There, well, in that case, we're adjourned. Thank you. All right.